Meeting to order. It's our regular select board meeting. Welcome, everyone. It's nice to have a bunch of people. First thing is set a just agenda, and I know we have a couple of changes that we want to make.
Remove item six.
Item six, which is a water and sewer connection for the Yellow Barn, just because we need, we still need to have
Some more information.
More information on that. We don't have everything we need to move on that. However, I want to add, so I could just add an item six, I guess. I want to add an item to have the town manager sign for mortgages that are going to need to be filed against the Yellow Barn property from where right now we really need one for EDA. It's for a grant, actually, but they want a mortgage, and they're going to, so like to add an item to designate the town manager to sign or authorize the town manager to sign mortgages for that property for the grant funders and the loan funders. I thought Casey had mentioned one other thing, too, but now maybe it's on here. I don't remember where it was.
That was the resolution, maybe? And
Was item seven on the posted
Item four, maybe?
Posted agenda, or was it added?
It was on the post.
Oh, it was, okay.
This is all posted, okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other changes? Could I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Someone, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Michael?
Yes, I'm in favor, aye.
Okay. Good, so we have a new agenda, and we'll roll with that. So first off is communication from the audience. Is anybody here to address us for anything that's not on the agenda? Okay, and roll ahead then. Next is approve the minutes from last time, which was October 7th.
I will re-approve the minutes of the October 7th minute meeting as written.
Any discussion on the minutes? I thought they looked good. All in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
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 I'm abstaining.
Okay, so we got, we've got, everybody's an aye, except Kaylee's an abstain. Next, town manager report. Mr. Upson, do tell.
Yes, so the, after RD sent, Rural Development sent back the contracts that were sent for approval, we resubmitted them. They're an AIA-type contract.
This is for the swing bridge?
Yep, design and engineering. Those have been sent in, the revised narrative to basically the bike loop rather than a spur, to encompass the whole downtown. So downtown, over the bridge, the pavilion
Yeah.
Back up to the rail trail.
Cool.
So it flows a little better. So those are waiting, awaiting approval from RD. We'll follow up with them, and then we'll move forward with landworks for design of, working on the design for the pedestrian bridge.
Okay.
Which is much needed. The town, we have assisted with some further discussions on, with Josh Allen, on his house debacle. Josh's talk with the private landowner, it looks like that there's a preliminary agreement and for passage to his property. So I think that is, I think everybody's happy
Good.
On that one.
Great.
Including the town.
Great.
And then I met with Darcy McCann, the executive director for Northeast Kingdom Chamber of Commerce. Darcy is looking to revamp the current information booth on Sewer Plant Drive. It's pretty sad, looking pretty sad down there, so we're gonna, I'm gonna offer up as much assistance as I can to spruce it up and make it more available for passing motorists and bikers and walkers and just make it more of a, available and less sad.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sad would be good.
Yep.
I don't know that it gets visited very often
Right.
Now that the farmer's market hasn't been there for years.
Right, so we're working on some plans.
Talking about a, maybe a different location?
Possibly, yes.
That'd be good.
Yep.
Is that still in consideration for parking lot?
That
I don't know if you, too much work, but
Yeah, there's the overflow from the Yellow Barn, so
Right.
Which we're, that's all in, kind of, that's all in the plan.
The hoops?
Yep, because there's going to be a lot happening down on that end of town. Good things happening. I did see, I guess the building was shot at one point. There's a bullet hole in the side of it, so
Did it die?
It's sad.
It looks like it's certainly feeling a little low.
So, and then another set of plans for the downtown paving project has been released for final review. They include the pedestrian, the new stamped islands with the colored concrete that we were talking about last meeting.
We asked about it, yeah.
And then the verbiage for the night work in the agreement.
Yep.
So we're going over that.
So we're, we're good with that, probably?
Yep, yep. There probably won't be too many, any changes to it. It's just the final review period.
Yep, so that'll go out to bid pretty soon, right?
Don't they have to have some public meetings, like some actual public, I thought they talked about having public
They, yeah, they have a PR person. No, I don't think it was public hearings. I thought they were talking about PR, so they're gonna talk to, yeah, they're gonna do some PRs, like broadcast type stuff.
Just because people generally don't know. I mean, unless they're watching us talk about it, they don't really know, you know?
Well, the downtown's gonna get a facelift, the road is.
Yeah.
Some new signage, new crosswalks, so it'll be good.
And we're not tearing up the concrete underneath
Nope.
This time.
Nope.
We're good with that, right, Tom?
No.
We aren't?
That's why it gets all potholy.
You'd like to have the concrete out of there.
Yeah, that would be the best.
Yeah.
We just have to pay for it.
We just have to pay for it.
We can't afford eight hundred thousand, so
We could take some of it out. When the, we could. When the ground heaves with the concrete, that's what pushes it up on the road.
Yeah.
They did that at Route 100 between Waterbury and Stowe. They ripped up all the concrete.
Yeah.
So
But they probably didn't ask Waterbury and Stowe to pay for it.
Probably not, no.
Maybe they split it.
So we're starting to get responses back about waste handlers regarding sludge disposal plans. There's some hesitation by companies to give us any sort of pricing until the first quarter of the year, just because it's a little far out, allocations for their facilities. So we're kind of trying to answer some questions and
Excuse me, sorry.
Hi, hi there.
Hey.
So, basically, that's a work in progress on them giving us pricing, but they're asking, they're asking some questions, and we're giving them the information that they're requesting.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
So, all right, so we won't really have pricing until first quarter?
They're reluctant to give us pricing until the first quarter of the year.
Okay.
And this, this was for the, the taking on the sludge disposal, taking on negotiating with waste hauling companies directly
Mm-hmm.
To see if we could get a better price.
Right.
And that was a recommendation from Aldrich and Elliot.
Yep. Okay, so that's going to be happening, that we're going to be pushed out into, well, we were gonna be next year anyway, but
Yeah, we're, we're gonna give them what they're asking for. It's just terms of like percent solids, like, you know, nailing down a closer exact amount of sludge, which we got back, the final report from Paul Sennaack. He gave us a preliminary. We got it back yesterday.
Oh.
So we're able to provide, we have, we're getting, the information is coming in, and we'll be putting it out to the waste hauling companies. And Englobe, the one in Canada, is actually composting it rather than
Really?
Yeah, and that's, that's a practice.
Yeah.
Composting the solids, because you can heat them up
Yeah, yeah.
And get rid of the pathogens.
Yeah.
So that's actually a better form, and then they'll cap, so
Huh.
Is the timing effect going to affect the, obviously it's going to affect the project, but is it going to affect the 40% support, the grant support that we got?
Subsidy.
The subsidy for the
Yeah.
Because they were going to cover 40% of the engineering costs, right, or is the
They, I think, I think they still cover the part of the engineering costs so long as we move forward within five years. I think that's
For the upgrade.
Yeah, partial.
For the upgrade.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we have a couple, we have two years only on the bond.
Two years to finish our application?
Yeah.
That's correct.
Yeah, with the same terms, I think.
Excellent.
That's it for me.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Okay, we do have somebody here for public comment, too.
For public comment?
Just, just here.
Hi, Becca.
Hi, my name is Jessica Gaspere. I talked to someone yesterday who requested or just suggested I come here, and I'm in a hardback, so I'm sorry. I had no idea where this place was, and I was walking around down the stairs for a while. But I am Jewish, and I'm half Chinese, and I live in the Highland apartment building. I've been there since November. The people there are extremely anti-Semitic. They are part of about three families, three tenants, are part of QAnon, which is a right-wing extremist group that is very overt about hating Democrats, Jews, anything and everything. During Hanukkah, we had a harp menorah, and they threw Monster Crackers, and orange is at our door. It was not violent, but it was, I felt inappropriate. I contacted my landlord. She didn't respond at all. I asked, are these people treating us this way because of my religion, race, et cetera? No response. Many different things have occurred. I've contacted town manager David Upson, who's been wonderful about some issues, and he put me in contact with someone because the other night, one of the tenants came up to my door. They were drunk. They were saying racist things. Then they called me a kike outside of the window, and then wrote kike and other terrible things on my door, which I called the police, tried to call the police. I have pictures of it. Again, I contacted my landlord, two emails, another email about the importance of anti-Semitism and why it's a problem. No response. I called and called, no response. I finally got through to her. She asked me if I did something to provoke it, and that was all she did. So I'm just trying to prevent this from happening to other people. I don't feel like Vermont has treated me negatively at all. I don't feel like anybody looks at me differently. It's just this particular apartment building and this property manager, so I just wanted to speak about that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. All right, I don't, I think it's good, good to know, and thank you for coming. And yeah, continue. If there are things the town can assist with, you know, it sounds like you know about the police and you have been in contact with David Upson, so
I can just add that Jessica talks to me in terms of the Equity Committee, and so this definitely is something that the Equity Committee has talked about in terms of what policies the town has in terms of supporting people in our community who have had this experience, and so we're going to be talking about it in our committee and potentially making recommendations to the town about if there are any policy amendments that we can adjust or think about for the future.
Great. All right, thank you. All right, I'm gonna move this along to Road Foreman report. Tom Fadden.
Short and sweet. Let's see, last week, dealing with a water issue. Monday, we dealt with a crushed sewer that we had to help fix and repair, and besides that, all we've been doing is kind of brush.
Brushing brush.
I see, we finished West Hill Extension and the rest of West Hill, and then today we finished up on Stage House Road. So that entire road's done. So, so only West Hill and West Hill Extension. So we got the chipper until Tuesday, so Monday we'll probably be around the village, start around the village, cutting side streets here and there, so in spots that need it, so. Besides that
And you're gonna
That's all we've been doing, so
And you're gonna bring to us some, you're gonna help us remember to talk about adding brush cutting to the budget?
Yeah, Casey's got that in the budget.
We had, we had
Yeah, we started our budget process, and so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so when we
So we're gonna
Get our budget time, well
Okay.
Yeah.
We got it.
Okay.
Great.
All over.
So, and the only other thing is if anybody sees a job trailer that's over by the Health Center, they have started on a rail trail. They're working their way from Danville to Hardwick, and it almost sounds like maybe just brush cutting this year
Yeah.
As far as they can go, so
Yeah, the contracts were just awarded, and they have, I think, till November next year to finish.
Yeah, they got, Petros is actually doing that section
Yeah.
That section from Hardwick out. That way, that, I think you said bid opening was sometime last week, I think, for that section, so I don't know who did it.
Yeah, that is the last one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the bridges were also bid out separately, too.
Yes. So, but that's on the way, if anybody's wondering about that, or if they see ATVs going up and down a rail trail, that's probably Petros. I'm not 100% sure, but they do have, they do have ATVs, because we've already seen them, so
Okay.
We did get one salt bid back. It went up to $79, and then I called Tim on Monday. He revised a bid and gave me District 6, so it dropped it down to, I think it was 74, I think, which is, I think we're $2.30 more ton, I think, than we were last year.
That's not that bad.
Compared to what it was 79, yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah, so we dropped
It matters where district you're in?
Oh, absolutely. If you are in, in Burlington area, where it's shorter, they only pay anywhere, I think somewhere's like $53 a ton.
Shorter distance for delivery?
Yep, and the state gets a little bit more better deal than what we do.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, so if, yeah, if you ever want to know what salt bid prices are, you can go on the state's website, and it's all, it's all listed in there, so
Okay.
But besides that, and we are having problems, like my truck, I still haven't got that back because of parts, so, yeah, knock on wood. Hopefully, it's gonna be a good winter for the trucks, because it's already been three weeks down there just waiting for one part, so
Would there
Go ahead.
Just not to like make a longer conversation, Tom, but would there ever be a benefit of, like, buying with a couple of other local towns? Salt, like, I imagine it's the same issue for Greensboro and Craftsbury.
No, everybody will get the same price. I mean, actually, Greensboro will probably end up being $2 more ton than what we are.
Because it's another
Because they're a little bit farther out, and they're in a different district.
Yeah, okay.
So we already do get, it is like a state bid price
Yes.
That we're getting, it's just
District price.
Or district price, yeah.
Yeah.
But it's through the, yeah.
Yeah, so, but that's about it, so keep plugging along.
All right. Other questions for Tom? Thank you, Tom. Next, I know Aaron's busy with some police work, but
Yes.
Do you want to, is there anything that we need to know about what the police have been up to, or are we just move along?
They're just, they're dealing with an incident.
Yeah.
The aftermath of an incident that they're, they were involved in last night, so
And that's what's keeping him busy?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, so let's move along. Next, Hardwick Electric report
Charlie.
Given by TBD, that must
That's my, that's my middle name. Those go on Mike Lambrosino, one of the commissioners. Just a couple of updates. H11 is basically, construction's finished. The developers have a little bit of problem getting some paperwork finalized because evidently, I guess, there was a police shooting range on site, and there was some sludge that was dumped. All the paperwork is in order. It's being processed. We're hoping to be online by early November, so we're close. The Walcott Hydro Dam, we just finished pouring 92,000 pounds of concrete. We're just about finished. Hoping to get that online pretty soon also. It was a big undertaking, all that concrete, but it looks great. Lucky, some of the underpinning, it told us bad was good, so we saved some time and some money, so that's, that's going well. There are two state programs still available for people who are in arrears on utility bills. They're gonna come to an end soon, but they're, they're easy to apply for. I don't know if anybody out there, we know there are people in arrears, but there was money, and it's not only for you, for electric, it's also for water or sewer charges.
Right.
If people are in arrears, they should really look at it. It's easy to apply to. We'll help people on the electric side if they want help. There are two programs. I think individuals can get up to $10,000 of help, and businesses up to $50,000. So it's a lot of money, but it's gonna be gone pretty soon. Talking about money, for the year, our revenues are up a little bit, and our expenses are down a little bit, which, you know, is helping us keep electric rates constant, which we strive really hard to do. And I think we're in good shape in terms of financial, and we keep the electric rates where they are. We did have a overturn of staff in the last year administratively in the office. There's some new people who are fabulous, young to, I'm not gonna say old, but not as old as me, but we do have a new controller starting soon, who's a CPA who we're really excited about, bring a lot of, next level of understanding of accounting, and allow us to give you more information quicker and keep our building in good shape. So overall, you know, things are starting to settle down a little bit, and we're looking forward to continuing this year profitably.
You don't happen to know about the status of the website for HED, do you?
The website is actually, we just started redoing the website. It's gonna take a little bit of time. We have somebody working on it, so it'll be coming up, but I don't have the time.
And I just want to put in a plug for when it is up and operational to try to keep the agenda and the minutes of your meetings posted in a timely manner.
Yes.
I know it's not you personally, but just to carry that message back again.
I will.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Michael?
No, but I thank you for coming out today. I, I had contacted Lynn, Downtown Commission contacted Lynn to ask about whether or not maybe the, maybe HED would be interested in helping us a little bit if we were to try to do some more with holiday lighting downtown. And so we're still talking about possibilities, but I appreciate your time today.
We walk away with a new list.
Yeah.
So, it's going forward.
Excellent. Great, well, thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
Appreciate the report. All right, next, item number one, Assessor Matt Kudreski is here to present two errors and omissions related to HED, I believe, actually.
So, let's come back to Paul. I'm kind of at the mercy of the district advisor on this one, so I'll kind of try to agree with it. I'm sure if you have any questions, if you need any clarification here. So technically, there are two counts that this errors and omissions request affects. The narrative that I've included with both of them is the same, so I'll kind of just summarize with that. The first parcel on by Hardwick Electric is technically classified as Craftsbury Road. It's a town account, so it's kind of town various equipment property. The parcel ID is 000-00-00682. The current assessment on it right now is $1,936,300. And the second parcel that this is going to affect, again, it's on by Hardwick Electric, it's classified as various, it's in the Village District in this case, parcel ID 000-00-00531. The current assessment on that parcel is $211,900. So the district advisor, after speaking with her from the state of Vermont, has indicated to me that our grand list value for these two parcels is incorrect for 2021. She has submitted to me the electric utility inventory, and has asked us to adjust the value. Again, certainly needs to be approved, this formality by you, the board here. It brings the total between the two parcels from $2,148,200 to a total of $4,798,400. So what I can decipher is between the two parcels here, the town portion of the value accounts for roughly 90% of that figure, and the village portion of that is roughly 10% of that parcel. It's the breakdown. So what I'm asking from you here tonight is the 682 parcel needs to be adjusted to $4,318,600, and the 531 parcel would be adjusted to $479,800. The other part of this, there are, and I'm probably getting a little bit ahead of this, Casey, the business manager, indicated to me that you potentially have a pilot arrangement with Hardwick Electric. So this is something where, again, if approved by you, the board here tonight, typically what I would do is I would adjust this in the tax billing side, the software, and alert Alberta, certainly that there's a revision in the queue. In this case, I think that potentially there's a different arrangement here. So again, I'm probably getting ahead of myself here a little bit. I'll kind of propose it to you, and certainly what you think.
Well, thank you for, for mentioning that, because that was my first question, was that, because they're on a pilot, HED pays a pilot payment in lieu of tax, not a tax bill.
Right.
So this is an adjustment in the assessment.
And you base their pilot off their assessment?
Yeah.
But this is huge, and not something that I knew, or I'm guessing HED knew, like assuming this is gonna add. So let me run some numbers on that, because I wasn't prepared for that for tonight, so I'm sorry.
Okay.
Do you want to clarify what the deal is with Craftsbury Road?
Is Craftsbury Road Route 14?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Who knew? Okay, some people knew. I didn't know.
I guess
I will say, I will say that I did, yesterday, I was at the office, and I did go downstairs and speak with both Amanda and Casey to kind of give a bit of a warning on this anyways, because I knew that, as I put it to them yesterday, that there would be a bit of a sticker shock involved here. So in terms of how this was gonna be worked out, I tried to, and they kind of just said, you know, present it, see what they think. Certainly, may I ask them if you require a copy of the electric utility inventory that was provided to be by the state here? So they kind of said, hold off on that, if you needed it, you know, additionally after the fact, I could certainly provide that to you. But the district advisor, I'll say this, too, had also indicated to me that she didn't believe that they had provided this to the community in a timely fashion. She believed that it was on their end that we didn't receive this. Looking at this value, too, it looks to me that this value hadn't been updated for quite some time. They're usually at kind of the mercy of PBR and the state to send us the utility values, and certainly you would make those adjustments typically on an annual basis. The year that it was associated with these two values went back to potentially 2006, unless it was an error and that somebody hadn't changed the adjustment in that value, but the years that it's associated, at least in the CAMA side of things, was 2006. So the district advisor, again, believed that she hadn't necessarily provided this to you in a timely way.
So we had, that, wasn't that a year we had a townwide reassessment?
It was, but we had one back
In '16.
In '16 or '18, that I thought they had come out during that.
It's every 10 years.
Yeah.
Well, roughly.
So, yeah, I thought that they had increased during that one also, but I don't, I don't have any of that.
Is this, so is this something, Matt, that we have to, is, this is not something we have to approve, is it, or is there?
Technically, you don't have to approve it. I mean, I have to certainly present it to you, and you have to approve it if I might go ahead and make this change. I will say that the district advisor I will say that the District Advisor is waiting on, hopefully this change being made before I send her the final 411, and she can interpret that. A 411 is basically a summary of your grand list for the year, and I kind of told her I can't send you that 411 until I have that approved by the board, and she certainly understood. And I can certainly tell her that, you know, if there's some discussion or some disagreement here, that, you know, potentially this is going to be delayed a little bit.
What are the implications of not approving it?
Again, I'm not privy to all of the tax implications here with being a pilot arrangement, so if this is something that a tax bill isn't typically sent out, it's really tough for me to comment on. I mean, we have a grand list established already, you have your rate certainly established off of that lodged grand list, so making an additional change to this with two properties that are technically under a pilot arrangement, I can't imagine that there's necessarily a, you know, a real impact to the community tax-wise there if there's a pilot arrangement, but again, I'm not privy to a lot of that.
But the pilot is based on assessed value, right?
Right, so we set the pilot based on their assessed value. It doesn't technically go into our tax revenue, it's a separate revenue. So I guess at that point, if you accepted these, we could still discuss at the next meeting whether or not you want to adjust their pilot for this year based on the new numbers that Matt's presenting, or if you want to leave it with the numbers we thought they had from last year that we've already billed them for that are due in May, and you do have some other room there, I guess, I think, Matt, is that correct?
Is it correct in terms of that not being, not having to approve it tonight?
No, no, if they approve it tonight, that doesn't mean that we have to go back and redo their pilot until we've had time to have further conversation.
Right, right, again, a lot of that stuff is stuff that I'm not necessarily privy to, so a lot of times like in communities we work in, if there's a tax stabilization agreement or an increment finance district, we would certainly set, you know, a baseline assessment in some of those instances, but in terms of your negotiations, I wouldn't think you necessarily need to renegotiate that. I think that this is probably just more of a clerical adjustment to your grand list, saying that these need to be the values, and then in terms of what you collect, that's your business certainly, but again, a lot of this stuff is, I present this assessment change and whether or not we need to correct what is lodged as a grand list, in terms of what needs to be collected after the fact there, that's certainly out of my hands.
So it seems like we could, for the sake of getting, for the sake of the 411 report, we could approve this, then have conversations with HED about what it looks like, and there's not, like, that could be a longer process. And then we could also maybe have a conversation about what kind of annual, like, how we're doing this in the future, if it's been that long since we, it's a really big jump in their assessed value, so we could think forward about.
We could, we could think forward, but I think what Matt's saying is that the assessment value is kind of handed down from a state district office?
That's what it's sounding like, yeah.
Isn't that essentially what you're saying, Matt?
That's correct, so utilities are sent to us typically by the state, and in most communities that I'm involved with, the community typically won't contest that at all.
Yeah.
And it's the state, the District Advisor typically that facilitates that value being sent to the community.
And does this, would this change, so this changes our grand list, and does that have any ramifications beyond our pilot agreement with HED?
That's, I don't know, Eric, I don't know the answer to that.
Like in terms of school funding formula or anything like that?
Do you know that, Matt? Does that change our school funding formula by putting this much extra into our grand list?
Again, if you have a pilot arrangement with them and it's separate, you don't necessarily send them a tax bill and it's collected through a different fund, I can't imagine that it does, but I may even subsume there.
Sounds like we should maybe figure that out before we approve it, just in case it has a, if we have time.
So if we could explore some of these questions and, oh yeah, no, or not, so the next, November 4th, could we, could we, if we did this on our next meeting, which is November 4th, Matt, is that going to work for on your end?
That would work, and at that point too, I can reach out to the District Advisor too to try to give me some, you know, what ultimately is the impact here, if it is truly a pilot agreement, what is the impact to the community from a budgetary standpoint, from a tax standpoint, I can try to get a little bit more guidance there. Errors and omissions, goods need to be handled before December 31st of any given year, so from January 1st, we can't do any more errors and omissions, so certainly I could present this to you next month.
I think that would be great, and then we could get some questions answered and, I mean, because as in errors and omissions, if it were a regular tax situation, then that would result in a change in a tax bill. So if we do it as an errors and omissions, like, and we follow that same sort of process, you would think it would result in a change in the pilot.
Right, when he sent, and when he sends the final 411, I don't know where that determines what the town owes versus the state.
Oh, is it the 411? What is the 411?
Oh, the report that explains the entire grand list and how it's broken down with everyone.
Okay. Yeah, so let's, let's push it and try to.
Since 2006, so we'll give it a little report.
Yeah, and Michael, do you, can we get you anything to bring back to Hardwick Electric? Because you guys will, did you meet already or will you meet this week?
They meet.
You met already? So you wouldn't meet before the meeting again?
Well, we're going to meet coming two weeks ago.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, we have a joint meeting.
That's like the ninth, right?
Sounds correct.
All right, but, all right, we'll try to make sure, somebody, somebody could make sure that we give HED a heads up on this. We just did, there we go, got it.
So did you say grand with a D or grands with a T?
Grand with a D.
Okay.
Yeah, it's grand, our list.
Grand list. I mean, Michael, this is on our, we should probably give, do we need to give you a copy of this, he's got.
Sure. It'd be a great take, in the office, I can give you mine.
Thanks, we're all, I'm sorry.
So, thank you, Matt, and we'll see you next time.
Okay, excellent, and if I get any additional port of comments from the state, too, I can either send it along to Casey or Amanda certainly, I mean, if you need to see the electric utility, electric utility inventory that's sent to me by the state, I can provide that to you as well if you need.
I can't see how that would be useful for me personally, but it's possible that it'd be useful for HED, I don't know.
He was trying to have a look there.
Yeah, all right, yes, if you can get it, then yes, send it and we'll pass it along.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. All right, so next up, Bill Chidsey's here from the Town Energy, he's the Town Energy Coordinator and providing an update about setting up the Energy Committee.
I have a few of these agendas left over, which pretty much outline what we're up to.
Great.
Nice printed material, doesn't flicker.
Dear Sisbon. Thank you.
So, rather than read the list, what you don't see on the list is that two citizens showed up for the first meeting, and neither of them voiced that they wanted to join the community formally, but that's one of our line items, and I would ask you to tell anyone who cares about this subject to please come by once a month and bring their best that they can to help us get things done. For myself, I've worked independently on the municipal buildings, so I have the fuel records for five years, I know where the tanks are and the fills are and what their IDs, and what companies they're serving, what buildings, and I'll next move on to the electric utility over the next six weeks. And Casey's been great, I want to also compliment Amanda, our new town manager, intern town manager, everyone has just pitched right in and especially mine, do I say her name, Mike? She set up our webpage, got my email going, of course, I'm supported by Contacts and Efficiency Vermont with Button Up Campaign, although I will need some committee members to help implement that more locally. And of course, CECAN, the state organization, whether if you have any questions or advice for me, I just wanted to listen and take notes.
Thank you for taking this on and reiterate the call for anyone interested in energy efficiency issues in Hardwick, that they can join the Energy Committee, it's the
Second Tuesday.
Second Tuesday of the month, here, right?
It's downstairs.
But in the, yeah, okay, downstairs and in the memorial building. Bill, have you put anything in the Gazette or contacted the Gazette or?
I've learned how to do that since the first meeting.
Okay.
That's correct.
And I think it was posted on Front Porch Forum a couple of times, but.
That was my word.
Yeah.
I, through the email, the town email I have Front Porch Forum, town member.
Yep.
List.
That's great. Well, thank you and good luck attracting folks.
Well, brace yourselves.
Okay.
Because I'm a man of action.
All right, good. Thank you very much and thanks for coming. Next is item three, Select Board to Review and Consider Approving the Warning for Special Vote and the Proposed Charter Change to be Held on December 9th, and before then, we need to have two, two special, are there special meetings or hearings? Hearings? Whatever. And they are, I can't remember, they're November, are they November 3rd, 4th and, and what, 4th and?
They're before the Select Board meetings.
Right, okay, so 4th and the 20, what would that be, 25th?
No, it'd be a week before that.
No, 18th.
Oh, 18th. Oh yeah, I was adding 2, adding 3.
5:30 PM, so 5:30.
5:30 PM, all right, and I know we have heard, I have heard from people directly and I know others have also heard from folks, so I'm hoping anybody listening, if you have opinions, it's great that you reached out, but it'd also be really great if you showed up at one or both of these hearings or special meetings.
If democracy can't happen without the participation of the public.
There we go. All right, so could we have a motion to approve the warning for, oh, and the other, sorry, the other thing I want to say about the warning is that Alberta ran it by, everybody it needed to be run by. I asked, I think everybody probably saw my email, but I asked, like, can we just, could we have a plain text version that just says, look, these are the major items, and the answer was no.
But I think we can make that plain text version available.
Separately.
Yeah, separately.
Which I think we need to do.
And I think it's a good thing to do.
Yeah, because I think there are just some really, you know, there's some major, there's a bunch of minor changes, like changing select men to select board, and there, you know, other things and there, but there are a couple of pretty major ones, like eliminating the listers and making the town clerk and town treasurer appointed instead of elected, and these are things that.
And making the town clerk and treasurer a single office.
So these are things that really people should weigh in on and they should know that these are major changes.
I'd like to motion to approve the warning for this special vote on the proposed charter changes for December 9th, 2021.
More discussion on the warning? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, that's everyone.
Here's Michael.
So motion carries. Excellent, next is.
Hold on one second, Michael, you're going to need to come into the office and sign this.
Okay, I'll be in in the morning.
Thank you.
Next is item four, Select Board to Appoint a Town Manager as the new authorized representative for planning loan on the wastewater treatment facility upgrade through the Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund.
I'd like to motion to appoint a town manager to be the new authorized representative for the planning loan on the WWTF upgrade through the Clean Water Revolving Fund.
Excellent.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's everyone, so motion carries. Thank you. Next is the Select Board to Discuss if the town wants to opt in to the National Opioid Settlement, and we had, I don't know if it's, if it's in our packet, it is in our packet, but we also had a by email fairly lengthy explanation of what that is. I don't know if somebody, I actually only, all I know about it is what I read, and there we were, that we read, it looked like we were, you know, encouraged to adopt it or to opt in, sorry.
It doesn't seem like there's any downside to doing that, is there? Do you feel like?
No. And it's from the state's Attorney General's office, and basically that list of reasons for opting in that I found to be persuasive.
There was a few states that settled, and Vermont was one of the states to continue on with the suit.
Oh, that's right, separately, yeah. So this is a settlement.
Yep.
So if Vermont continued on, then should we not be opting in because we haven't settled? You know what I mean?
This is the proposed settlements.
Oh, I see.
I believe.
For that, new.
After two years, I mean, two proposed nationwide settlements agreements, so do we want to be part of that as a town of Hardwick or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the question. So do we want to be part of, do we want to opt in to the National Opioid Settlement?
Is there any downside? I just asked.
I can't, I don't think.
That's the question I just asked, I can't imagine that there is.
And is the settlement, do we need to use that in a specific way, or is it, it was kind of unclear with the 15%, like, if, how we were supposed to be using it.
I agree, it was a little unclear.
Because I kind of wish Aaron was here, because I feel like he could speak to maybe some of the past expenses of the opioid crisis for the PD. That's the only thing I could think of in terms of town expense.
Well, there's non-monetary expense.
Right.
And I think that you have to take that into consideration in this. So basically, any sort of, like, you know, any sort of settlement to the town would help with training, treatment. So, I mean, I.
Sounds great.
Yeah. So we just talked ourselves into it?
I'm with we opt in.
Okay.
I second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor of opting in to the National Opioid Settlement, please say aye.
Aye.
That's everyone, so we're opting in, thank you. Next is the item six that we replaced, once, so the new item six is that Select Board to Consider Authorizing the Town Manager to Sign Mortgage Documents for the Yellow Barn Business Accelerator Project, and the current one, the bid that's needed, I think, is for EDA, but who's, we have a grant for $3 million for that project, but there will in the future be, in the near future, be others from other grant funders and lenders. So I would, I would love it if we would authorize the town manager to sign mortgage documents related to the Yellow Barn for, for grant funders or lenders to the project.
So.
One second. If that's the vote.
Yeah. Any discussion on that? Oh, I'll just say as part of discussion, that, just a point of clarification, that the mortgages are being recorded against the building, but the town isn't actually borrowing any of the money, so it's a complex arrangement, but the grant funders are requiring mortgages to be recorded against the property, which seems a little odd to me, but that's just what they want in order to ensure their interest, that we'll do what we say we're going to do with the property. with the property. And the loans that come, the loans are actually gonna be taken by the Northeast Kingdom Development Corporation, which is a nonprofit group that's gonna hold the loans, but the loans will be secured by a mortgage against the property. Does that make sense?
Do we know when things are gonna start happening?
So there is a reasonable chance that the project will go out to bid tomorrow.
Whoa, on a Friday, my God.
Yeah. There's also a reasonable chance it won't be till like Monday, but, because one of the things that needs to happen is EDA's mortgage needs to be recorded before...
Right.
Because they don't, they won't give their blessing until that happens. So a lot of stuff.
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second. So all in favor of authorizing the town manager to sign mortgage documents for the Yellow Barn project, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Michael?
Hello? Yes, I'm here.
Are you, are you an aye or an a?
I'm an aye.
All right, that's everybody. Motion carries, thank you. Next is item seven, Select Board to Consider Approval of the 2020 Municipal Resolution for the Municipal Planning Grant.
2022.
Sorry.
This is the municipal planning grant that we've talked about before in relation to the application for downtown designation.
Yeah.
So Allison Lowe's gonna work with the Downtown Commission on that and potentially we'll have either a community development person or a consultant that will help us. So the grant is a $22,000 grant with a 10% match. But Hardwick competes with other towns in the Northeast Kingdom in our region, but not across the entire state.
Oh.
So, and downtown designation is considered a priority project for focus on, with municipal planning grant, so.
So chances are good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can that, can that, then we don't have to really talk about the match until we...
Right.
Have more information, right?
And the match will be relatively small.
Yeah.
22, 22.
2200.
I move that we approve this 2022 municipal resolution for the municipal planning grant.
I can second that.
All right, and then...
Allison was gonna join us tonight, but she's, oh, she is. Did you want to say anything, Allison?
No.
That happened.
You stated it all beautifully.
Oh, my gosh.
Wow, all right.
Getting better at it.
Great. So we have a motion and a second to adopt this resolution for the municipal planning grant. Any other discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, that's everyone, so motion carries. And next is Select Board Reports.
I just wanted to make a quick report that the Hardwick Equity Committee is still meeting the first Monday of every month and we do have some open seats available. They are available to Hardwick residents as well as residents outside of the town of Hardwick. We just have to have a majority of Hardwick residents. So if you're interested in joining the Equity Committee or at least coming to see what we're all about, you can email equity.committee@hardwickcommittee.org.
You are totally making that up.
No, I'm pretty sure that's it.
Okay.
Or you can email me.
Great.
Yeah.
Awesome. Other Select Board Reports?
The townhouse is closing up for the, for the, you know, winter part on November 16th. Casey tells me that Wayne's coming to shut things down, Wayne Richardson. But we just received word that we were, NECARTS is a recipient of Vermont Arts Council $5,000 grant for COVID recovery, so we'll be able to use that to put towards marketing efforts and other things to kind of come out of the, hopefully, hopefully next season we're coming out of the pandemic and it, we can use it up to December of 2022, so...
Great.
Over the next season, that'll be helpful.
Awesome.
We can pay utility bills and stuff like that that we haven't had any time to pay, so.
Well, any other Select Board Reports? New business? Any old business?
I have two quick old businesses.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, just because I drive by it almost every day, I just, I'm wondering about what the future of the mailbox is in the winter on the sidewalk across from the town.
Oh, yeah.
Uh...
Townhouse.
The townhouse. That came up months ago and it was unresolved, but at some point we're gonna have to plow that or at some point it'll be in the way of snow.
So this, so this is a weird issue where the postmaster said that the mailbox needs to be like in the middle of the sidewalk.
In order for the mail to be delivered there.
Isn't that weird?
Most of the rest of us don't get mail at home, so I don't get how...
I don't get, yeah, I don't understand.
I don't understand how they get mail.
There are lots of things we don't understand about it.
So there's a mailbox in town.
On...
Church Street.
On the sidewalk.
On the sidewalk.
In the middle of the sidewalk.
In a can?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So her idea is to move it back and forth all the way.
Right, back and forth every day?
Yes, every day.
The postmaster's mistress.
The resident or the post?
The resident.
That seems like a lot of work.
Post office thinks they got jurisdiction and they can put it wherever they want, so they basically told her that's where it's going, because she actually had it back next to the telephone pole. And they said she couldn't have it there, had to be out next to the road.
Yeah, there's pretty specific guidelines on mailboxes.
Why does she want to know when I can get my mail delivered at home?
Because she has the right to have girl free delivery.
She is just over the line of the, uh...
We don't know where the line is.
I don't know.
Because there's a bunch down South Main Street, there's...
There's some on North Main Street.
Yes, there's...
It seems like as, as mailboxes or post office boxes are coming due, more and more addresses are being changed to be actual deliveries.
I'm gonna have to...
Yeah, how do you get on that list?
There's no, I don't, I mean, I could be wrong, but I don't think there's a requirement to have a post office box.
They won't deliver mail on the village.
Oh, they won't?
No.
Except...
They told that anyway.
Unless you have, unless you live over here and then you have to put your mailbox in the middle of the street.
Oh, so I guess, yeah, so there must be a border.
Yeah, apparently.
Guess we're gonna have to look at it some more.
Anyway, we don't know.
So that's planned.
Or that, that.
There you go, there's a plan.
Or it'll get plowed.
Exactly.
Right, or it'll get plowed.
So that was just, we were thinking, and the other thing was just we had had a conversation before bringing David on about having a bigger conversation with the community about what our policing might look like.
Right.
And that got put to the side because of our transition to the town manager, just because it's already the end of October. I was wondering if we were, if we wanted to bring that conversation up again, maybe when Aaron is here at our next meeting. We had talked about having basically like a...
Community forum.
Community forum where we could answer some questions and just talk about what it, what it means to have a contract versus not having a contract with a different town. So I know there's still a lot of questions about that. And with budget season coming up, it seems like, with budget season starting, it seems like a good time to have it.
I'm trying to do that.
Yeah, I think Casey's been working pretty hard on that.
Budget season is well underway.
Yeah.
I would put it that way.
So I just wanted to keep bringing it up because it's been, we've been kind of talking about it for a while.
Uh, so we should probably try to set up, I mean, it's not like we have very many meetings coming up, right? Just a couple, let's start here and there, so, and a, and a town meeting, in fact. Uh, do you want to try to do a...
I'm gonna try to like wrap it into the town meeting or to wrap it into any of the other meetings, but...
What are you, what sort of questions?
I would say any questions that people have, they can direct to my office.
So we have talked, we have basically talked about having, we've had lots of conversations at the Select Board level here and lots of public comment about it, but it, it came up at a few Select Board meetings that maybe having a specific meeting to talk about the different options that we have in terms of not having, it came up with the Greensboro contract, obviously, so what does that really mean for the budget season? We had talked about, is any changes in the budget season if we were to have a public meeting, then that would help in a conversation during town meeting to pass the budget, whatever that might look like. Obviously, things have been changing and it's been hard to be able to say this is exactly what we're doing, but it just, it just basically kept coming up and we kept not doing it. So we had talked to Aaron about what that could look like. He did a really great forum in Greensboro that was basically like, this is what the police department does and, you know, it could be something like, I don't have a specific idea about it, it's just, it's the kind of thing that we've been not committing to. We don't have to commit to it, but we keep talking about it, so.
Is this something that we could maybe have, where we could present a vision for the police department? Maybe, I don't know, I'm just trying to think about how to kind of structure a...
Pull that and, and be able to get some public comment.
Yeah. Just having public comments as a...
People do have opinions about it.
That's true, but they can bring those opinions...
Right.
Anytime and having a forum that's just wide open, kind of...
Well, I think it would have to be facilitated.
Yeah, facilitated by...
Like there, that's my thing, if we had, if we, if we had it as another agenda item to talk about what it really looks like, or maybe David and Aaron could just talk about what, what it could look like and then bring it back to us to say, here's some options. Because I don't, I don't think like a totally open, let's just talk about the police department meeting makes sense at all, but, but I think there are just a lot of questions about what, you know, how we're going to pay for this and what it's going to look like if we don't have a contract. So I think it'd be helpful for community members to be able to hear about some of the, maybe it's a vision...
Yeah.
Or maybe it's some ideas that we have, or maybe it's a combination and they could provide comments on what we're thinking about.
And we might hear what's important to the community, at least from those who show up. Yeah, and so the main questions are if we don't have a contract with another municipality, how do we continue to fund the police department at a level that provides a level of service, you know, the 24/7 coverage that people have been used to?
Well, is there a flyer going out or anything like that for the special meeting?
For December? No.
The, the special meeting is an Australian ballot vote, so there's no actual public meeting to that.
I don't know whether there's something going out saying, you know, if you're mailing, you can add something about input and stuff, so.
We'll just...
We haven't talked about anything like that, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Now, so a good idea though, economize if we could, but, so is that something that you'd be willing to try to think about, a way we could try to gather some public input around what people want or maybe not necessarily people want, like just maybe we have a vision for what it could look like if we could have contracts with another municipality and what it would look like if we didn't?
Yeah. In terms of coverage, in terms of...
Coverage and budget, basically.
Okay. Yeah, I think, I mean, some of that is based on staffing levels, I mean, there's a lot of factors. We are gonna have people coming back from deployment, so, I mean, yeah, we can, just like a, like a, basically saying what the police department is doing and their, their mission and go, how they're gonna move forward, potentially without a contract and potentially with a contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had a long conversation of, like, a couple months ago.
I can look back at the meeting minutes.
Yeah, there's, basically, Aaron did a great presentation on what the, what the max staffing is with a, with the Greensboro contract, like what the kind of ideal budget, like the budget that we've been building for a long time and then what that, what that might be, how that changes with some staff coming back for deployment or not coming back or like, there, there was a lot of shifts happening in the police department at that time.
Okay.
So we, as the board, talked about, okay, what do we need for 24/7 coverage, bare minimum just for Hardwick? Can we afford that? Do we have to have a contract with a different town to afford that? So basically like seeing all the pieces of it and then being able to say, okay, if it's something that we really want as a town, just Hardwick to have 24/7 coverage, this is what it's gonna cost and this is, these are how many people we need to do that. And so that way we can just have a conversation saying, hey, we're, we're committing to this because that's the, that's the coverage that we want. If we can't afford that, this is the other option that we have. So that was, that's kind of the conversation that's been happening and...
Yeah.
There's a lot of, I think there were probably a lot of minutes to remember about, or Aaron too, can give, he gave us a lot of reports about, about that.
And I, I would just say that if we, if we don't staff the department 24/7 and there's a gap in our coverage, currently, right now, we are covering that gap with our current staffing. There are no other options for law enforcement coverage if we're not 24/7.
I think that's another thing the public would probably want to hear, so like being able to say this is...
Yeah, the state police are, I mean, basically unwilling and unavailable, they don't have the people, you know, ultimately they would have to, but you're, there's, there's some, there's some problems with that in terms of response times, just unavailability of people. And then, you know, there's always, we had spoken with the Loma County Sheriff's Department and I believe they're in the same boat with staffing and can they realistically provide the coverage to, within the gaps that we need to provide, so, yeah.
And again, I just think that's something that a lot of public would really like to hear, is like...
Yep.
This is what, especially when we're voting on the budget, because it's a big, it's a huge part of our budget, so, like if we can do what we can to have that conversation before town meeting, I think it might be really helpful for us, it's just...
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Public meetings, everyone at Gollings Kitchen and Phil Gunnar's, yeah, and there's food.
It's a good idea. I'm copying.
And then, like I said, Mike, you know, people, please, you know, people can reach out to me with their concerns or questions and, you know, ideas, like, um, wide open.
And I think the genesis of this conversation was really when the Greens, when we did not get the Greensboro contract renewed and for years we said that the Greensboro contract was what allowed us to have two officers per shift for 24/7 coverage.
Right.
Being able to share that cost without that Greensboro revenue, we, to shrink, I mean, to shrink the budget, it's almost all, well, largely labor, so that was kind of the beginning of that conversation.
And then the COPS grant, have, having the people to be able to continue that.
Yeah.
That's a factor too, and that would be another revenue loss.
Right. But the COPS grant goes away every time anyway. It's only three years, I think.
Yeah, I think it was just renewed.
Or extended or something. Or renewed. Yeah. I'll find that.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other new business, old business? Adern, thank you all.